We have a scheduled meeting for March 23rd, 2021, at the Bristol, Virginia City Council to order. If you please join me in a moment of silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, I appreciate everyone who came out tonight and those in the audience, those watching online. A couple of things during my mayor's minute, I'll point out, I see this the other day, and the Braxton Garrett, who is a freshman at Virginia High School, was a finalist in the National Association of Housing, I don't know what that R stands for, NHRO, What Home Means to Me Calendar Contest, and her artwork, which is here, was featured for the month of May. So that's a great honor to have a national finalist from here in Bristol and to be featured that way. So I appreciate them sending that and letting people know. Also want to remind people, a couple of notes that, let's see, April the 2nd, which is Good Friday, will be a holiday for the city and the city offices will be closed. And before we meet again in our regularly scheduled meetings, we will have a presentation of the city budget on Tuesday, April 6th, and a public hearing on Thursday, April 8th, to discuss the tax rate. So those things. And then the last thing is to once again remind people, I know, you know, the weather's getting warmer, more and more people are getting vaccinated, rates have gone down of COVID from what they were a couple of months ago, but yet I saw in an article in the paper today talking about how they've kind of steadied out and starting to go back up again. So while it looks like there's some light at the end of the tunnel, I do remind people, please continue to be safe, to social distance, wear a mask, and hopefully as we move through this year, things will ease up, but we don't want to see things get back like they were again. So just ask that people take precautions. That's all I have. Does anybody have? Yeah, okay, we'll move to item B, city manager comments?
No comments tonight, Mayor.
All right. Item C, matters to be presented by the public. Do you have the sheet, Jerry? All right, let's see, we have one person that signed up, Mr. Ashbrook.
Noah Ashbrook, 925 Lewis Street, Bristol, Virginia, speaking on behalf of myself and a few teachers from Bristol, Virginia Public Schools. On March 13th, 2020, education in the Commonwealth of Virginia changed drastically when the Governor Northam instituted a mandatory two-week closing. During this time, Bristol teachers were instructed to prepare to teach online by the end of the two-week period. We scrambled and we were able to start online before some of the Commonwealth's more well-funded districts. Many districts like Henrico and Fuckier Counties didn't get instruction started until well into April. One common misconception about teaching is that we have summers off. Even if you wanted to believe that for prior years, that did not happen this past summer. The district told teachers that we had to prepare nine weeks' worth of material before we returned in the fall. For this work, we were paid $300. Most of the teachers I've spoken with averaged about 60 hours, putting our pay at about $5 an hour at the high end. We did it because it needed to be done to actually educate these kids. Teaching in the pandemic has been very different from teaching normally. Teachers came back to teaching in person four days a week during the day and virtual every evening. On Fridays, we have an entire day of virtual teaching. We have had to work with students who were frightened. With the uncertainty of COVID, economic uncertainties because of possible loss of parents' jobs, some kids panicked, some were depressed. Teachers became the online calm in their lives by listening and in some cases being the only stability in a world that had changed overnight. In addition to our student stability, teachers had to teach content, teaching in ways that most of us had never taught before. In person, teaching allows teachers to read the students' facial expressions and body language. Online, these are very hard to discern. We've added anonymous wellness checks at the beginning of our lessons because we must know where our students are before we tried to get them to learn any content at all. Just this year, we have had seven first-year nursing students out of a maximum of 10 that are in clinicals and will be able to test for their certified nursing assistance exam by the end of the year. Our automotive department is working with Toyota of Bristol so that the students can line up interviews as soon as they graduate. Some of these students already have their automotive service excellence certification, and our building trades department just built and sold a building to a community member. So maybe instead of talking about how we need to start to actually educate the kids, maybe we as an entity should be focused on where we can improve. Because I can tell you, coming from the public sector, the hogties put on us by state legislation, funding cuts that are as consistent as a sunrise, and near impossible asks by everyone around us, we are put in a position to where we are working miracles every single day. My final thought will be something that Mr. Mumpower and I will agree upon, and it was quote from the March 9th meeting. Something has to change. Something does have to change. We all know education has changed from 1979 to 2021, and maybe getting a better appreciation of what we're doing can help us all, Dr. Perigin, teachers, ESPs, council members, school board members, and community members refocus that much-needed change in a more productive direction instead of punishing the local level, where our hands have been all but completely tied since the first recession I started teaching in, in 2008. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ashbrook. That was the only person to sign up. If there's anyone else that would like to make a comment, free to come up. All right. Here now, we'll move to item D, adoption of the agenda.
I move for adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Clark, don't roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Item number one, landfill discussion. Mr. Reed?
Council tonight have Mr. Ernie Hope from Draper Hayden and Mr. Bob Dick from SCS Engineers here to discuss items that have been taking care of the landfill since we last convened in January in regards to beginning some repair work there, and they're going to give an update as to what has been done and what we need to expect going forward in regards to the landfill odor issue and other steps that we may need to take here in the near future.
My name is Bob Dick. I'm with SCS Engineers. As you're aware, SCS was engaged and retained by the city to accomplish some improvements in the infrastructure at the Bristol Integrated Waste Management Facility related to the landfill gas collection system. And so just to remind you, the three main components of those improvements and the objectives of that project were to upgrade the infrastructure associated with, number one, collection piping. In other words, the conveyance piping that moves the landfill gas out of the quarry portion of the landfill cell and brings it to a blower flare station where it's combusted or the power plant where it's used in internal combustion engines as part of your landfill gas-to-energy project. And number two, a horizontal collector was to be installed in the southern portion along the sidewall of the quarry waste filling unit, and that horizontal collector's purpose is to extract primarily landfill gas and also incidental liquids that accumulate in that horizontal collector, and those liquids removal is critical in order to enable the gas collection system to continue to extract gas. And the third component of the project was to improve the de-watering structure, the removal of liquids, and that involved a new pump station. I sometimes refer to it as a sump, and it also to install two pumps, air to supply the power to those pumps, forced main piping, and a tank was supplied by the city, and then also a discharge line that conveys the liquids that are extracted out of that infrastructure to the sanitary sewer. And so I'll remind everybody that the purpose of this certainly is multifaceted. There's air quality compliance reasons, there's health and safety issues for purposes of extracting the gas, but really the city engaged this at this time primarily due to malodorous conditions that were believed to be associated with fugitive emissions. When I say fugitive landfill gas emissions, that's the portion that's not collected and controlled by either the flare or the power plant. So the objective was to increase the system effectiveness and efficiency by these infrastructure improvements. And so the project was completed on Friday, March 12th, and at that time, the infrastructure was demonstrated to be capable of functioning. And when I say that again, the piping that was added included two new six-inch conveyance lines to extract and transport the gas out of the quarry waste unit. I'll point out that that's twice as much as existed beforehand, so we've increased the capacity for moving gas by over 200%, and that was shown to be effective in that the power plant noticed an increase in landfill gas flow from approximately 280 cubic feet per minute to 390. So at that portion of time, it appeared to be a 40% increase in gas that was being collected, and we certainly think that that's a step in the right direction in terms of controlling landfill gas that could potentially impact the surrounding communities with malodorous events. However, that did not last entirely due to some oxygen intrusion concerns in another portion of the well field, and the power plant had to back off that. It also has been demonstrated that the pump in the new pump station is stroking and is capable of moving liquid up to the rim of the quarry cell and then discharge into the tank and ultimately be drained into the sanitary sewer system. We're looking at how the quantity of liquid could be enhanced by perhaps a different configuration of where the tank is, maybe a different type of pump. So however, admittedly, not all of these elements are fully activated. In other words, I say the project's been completed, the construction and connection work and installation work has been done, but we recognize that due to some operational constraints, not each one of the extraction components that is either existing or new as part of this project is fully functional at this time. And so I wanted to give an update that, you know, a timeline of what's going to be done. Tomorrow, some wells are going to be raised, so SCS crews will be installing spool pieces on existing wells, which will enable the city to commence waste placement operations around those wells, and we believe the lateral serving those wells and a portion of the new collector can be reconnected within about two weeks. And obviously, that'll bring some additional extraction components online and move more gas through the additional piping that has been installed. And another major milestone, we believe, is about two weeks after that, a jumper line, and when I say jumper, an alternate means to connect a few wells in the northern portion of the quarry cell, which were not a part of this project but have been demonstrating monitoring data that suggests they're not performing at optimal circumstances and are lacking adequate vacuum to perform, to extract the gas. Those are intended to be addressed about two weeks after that. So while I'm here to report that the project that the city authorized, SCS, the infrastructure has been installed and completed and demonstrated to be functional, like any, you know, complex environmental control system that is dynamic in the actual way of waste placement operations, there's some items that are part of our short-term action item list that the city and SCS are continuing to work on. With that, my third point of being up here tonight was just to encourage you to remember that the mitigation, abatement, and control of odors is a marathon event, it's not a sprint. It will involve the necessity to appropriate additional monies to actually enhance the well field, and that enhancement will likely need to involve installation of additional extraction components, both vertical wells or horizontal, whichever is most suitable for the operations. And so I encourage you to recognize that we do think that you have the ability to reduce odors that might be attributed to fugitive gas emissions now that the project is done. We're not quite at the finish line, there's a couple more things that need to be done, and in fact, you probably will not ever have a zero odor landfill, there's really no such thing, but we do recognize that it's very important and that council is committed to reducing the odors as much as possible and minimizing the impact of the odors and are continuing to work towards that. With that, I'll turn it over to Ernie from Draper Hayden.
Mayor, Council. As Bob has said, this is really a process, and it needs to be an ongoing process. So I believe a lot of progress has been made with the system upgrades. So essentially, the arteries, the main arteries that take this gas out of the landfill have been freed up. Now it's making sure that all the connections to it, all the vacuums are correct so that we can really maximize, as Bob had said, the draw or the pull of this odor from the landfill. At the same time, we have undergone putting together an odor management plan at the request of DEQ, that is in its final stages of review. It hasn't fully been accepted by DEQ yet, but essentially that lays out the steps, many of the steps that we're already taking, on what happens when there is an odor, how is it mitigated, how is it communicated to the public, what things are done. We're also talking with the air quality control folks, we've done grab samples with them, the city has conducted most of those. We recently started a 24-hour canister sample at the landfill that was done on this past Friday. We don't have the results from that yet, but that was at their request to put that in as part of an air monitoring plan. So as Bob said, this is a pretty dynamic situation, and odors come from many areas. In the best world, we can extract 90% of the odors and gases from this through the active system. Cover on the landfill is important, and that is something the city is working on as diligently as they can. This landfill is permitted for multiple covers, posi-shell, which you may be familiar with, is basically a spray-on temporary cover. Dirt, of course, is ideal, depending on how long you're going to be out of the area, and also tarps are allowed for short periods of time. So it's working with the city, making sure that that operational plan is in sync. As Bob mentioned, the challenge with this landfill, it has to comply with everything like every other landfill does, but it's not like every other landfill because it's below ground. And so making sure that how the stormwater is handled, how the emissions are handled, how the cover is handled, you know, all of these are somewhat unique, although the regulations don't provide any exceptions to this. We have to make sure that you comply with all of those. As Bob mentioned, the well field, making sure that that well field is correct. And as you know, there's really three landfills out there, some old ones. Those old landfills capture gas too, and what Bob was referring to earlier is we found that one of them is actually pulling too much oxygen in and really contaminating the good gas that's in there. So it's tuning that system and trying to balance it to the proper ratio so that the maximum of gas is pulled from the landfill, ultimately is flared or used for cogeneration for energy. I think with that, I will take any questions you might have. We did receive questions from a citizen that was forwarded to us. I think we addressed most of those in our discussions here tonight, but we'd be happy to, you know, drill into anything more specific if there's something that either council would like, or even citizens, we certainly are open to talking to them. They have an active Facebook page, which we take a look at, and you know, there's a lot of good information in there that citizens have. The Smell My City app that you may have heard of has a lot of data in it too. It's hard to quantify that data, there's some people are jokesters in it, occasionally you see a line, but this is kind of a layout of what the data looks like from January. The red numbers are how many reports were on the Smell My City app each day. Up at the bottom by zip code. So as you can see, a large percentage of them are from the Tennessee area, that's where most of the smells are coming at. And then if you flip to the next page, there's February. You're averaging about 11 entries a day people are putting on this app. And you go to the next page, you'll see March up to yesterday through midnight last night. And then the last page is really a summary page, it's got a lot of good information. So that shows you where all the activity came from by zip code. It shows you, in that app, that citizens can put in whether it's a 1 to a 5 ratio, very subjective, but how bad they feel it is. So as you can see, 60% or so are 4 or 5, but there are some that are just minor odors. And then comments, quite a few people, 72% of the people did put some comments in there to describe what they were smelling, so that has also been helpful. There has been some discussion that some of these smells are not just the landfill, that they're coming from other areas, and those are things that the public works and the city is investigating to try to isolate that and find out if there are other sources of this air contamination or smells that people are having. It's like anything else, if you smell something, all of a sudden you become more sensitized to it and you're more aware of it, and I think people are aware of it. And they, so could they be smelling it from other industries potentially, depending on the way the wind blows and the atmosphere is? It's a possibility. There's no question the majority of them are from the landfill, and the things that we're doing with the air system will absolutely improve things. We have to get it to its maximum efficiency, and then we'll be able to minimize it. The next steps, are there other steps? So yes, there are other steps. There's actually a deodorizer step. We have landfills that actually have a spray deodorizer on the circumference of the landfill that spray out of this to try to break up the odors as they come out of a landfill. Those are options. Those are options really for down the road, they're not the initial options that we recommend you take, but those are some of the other things that can be done down the road if this continues. If you have any questions for here.
I have one question about the information you shared there. Have you went back and done any kind of analysis looking at, like that, for example, the temperature and atmospheric conditions, just to see if, you know, when it's below, because I know a lot of that was January and February, when it's below freezing or, you know, you get more reports, or if there's any kind of relationship between that?
I haven't put that together. It's something to be relatively easy to do because it is by day, the data and timestamped. So clearly, low-pressure systems, when it's rainy and cloudy, low pressure is going to, by definition, be low pressure on the atmosphere, which will allow gases to escape. High pressure is going to hold it down, pressure it down. So clear days, and there's been some comments, and people, oh, it's a nice, pretty day and I don't smell it. Well, that's part of that high pressure that's happening. So weather absolutely does, whether there's an inversion potentially, and so all those factors do, and of course, wind. You know, today, the wind is blowing from Tennessee this way, and I actually thought I got an odor from Dynamic Recycling just standing outside here, you know, that sweet smell that you get from their operation. So wind has a lot to do with it too.
I'd like to say, I'd just, if it's possible, it'd be interesting, you might find something that could help. Does anybody, any council members have any questions while they're here? Well, one thing, just out of curiosity, you mentioned about the need at some point to appropriate additional funds, that, you know, we've set aside money to do this work, there's some still additional work that you're going to do in the next few weeks, but would that be something that we need to, I guess, I'm thinking more from a budgetary standpoint, be preparing for for next fiscal year, or it'd be something we would want to do, start, go ahead and start that this fiscal year? Just trying to think of where those might come from, and I know as we get into that, the city manager and the CFO both have some thoughts and recommendations on that, but, you know, we don't want that to stop the progress up there. Something needs to be done, we need to do it as soon as possible, but we also do need to plan for it and know what's coming, so I appreciate that.
There's probably two critical paths, there's multiples that it could go down, but the two that come to mind are, one, for the amount of cover that you're using, the posi-shell, that you have adequate supplies of that, and sometimes that requires renting equipment or other equipment you don't have, so that's critical that the landfill gets that, and they have been getting that as they need it. The second part is, we talked a little bit about the well field. So the well field out there started out with horizontal collectors. I have that, I think we have a shot of that in that slide deck. So the horizontal, that's all about what the data looks like from Smell My City, and again, I can provide this to council if they'd like to look through it. We can, they provide a Latin longitude on it that's skewed, so it doesn't drop it right on somebody's house where they clicked it, so it's in the general area, but it does help us with mapping and that. So the other part though is the wells. So the well started out as a horizontal collector back in the early 2000s. So that's the landfill. All those blue dots are wells, gas wells, and as Bob described, they're connected through a series of horizontal collectors, run along the rim of the quarry wall to the right there, and then come up and go in between the two yellow highlighted areas, which are the two older landfills, to the Enjanco plant. So we started out with horizontal collectors, and then they started drilling wells. The wells were only first drilled in around 2013. So 2013, there were about four wells put in, there were some more put in around 2011 or '12, and then the bulk of them were really put in around '16 and '17 as part of an upgrade that you had done with Enjanco to try to improve the amount of gas that they had. So the last wells that were done here are five years old. So looking at these wells, we're really going to identify are some of them underproducing or not producing well enough, no pun intended, that we need to re-drill them. So re-drilling a well is an expense, so what does it cost to re-drill a well? It depends on how deep you go, and it depends on some conditions and that, but, you know, round, big round ballpark numbers, you know, maybe $10,000 a well, they're not cheap. And that would be an expense that may be needed, will be needed within the next two years, may be needed sooner. Again, that highlighted area are the two older landfills on the top, on the right side, and they're identified by their permit number. And they're identified by their permit number.
Anybody have any questions? Since you did say you're welcome questions on the community, I'll let Mr. Pollard have a question. So if you could step up to the mic, Michael, just so people can hear on the video.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. You mentioned a odor management plan that you submitted to DEQ. Is that available to the public?
Absolutely, absolutely, as soon as it's finalized. It's in the development state now, but absolutely.
Okay. Would you be able to give any information about that plan and what the proposals are in the plan?
Sure. The odor management plan is essentially putting in writing what we're doing already. It's addressing citizens' complaints. It's not ignoring them. It's making sure that there's a way for them to get complaints to the city to be addressed. It's to gauge the level of complaints. It's to potentially do air samples as we're doing right now. Right now, we're doing air samples as part of an air quality initiative, not even the air monitoring plan. There's really kind of two separate things that DEQ has asked us for. The air monitoring plan is that, just that. It's monitoring it and it's a response plan. So it outlines what are the steps that you're taking. You recognize that there are potentially an issue and the issue could change. We hope that this becomes a moot issue for, you know, once this is done. But landfills typically can run in cycles like this. So how will you address it? And then if it doesn't get better over a period of time, what are the next steps that you might put in place? And that is really a, almost a clean sheet of paper. Because as I mentioned, the deodorizer around the rim of the landfill is an extreme example of what has been done at other landfills that may or may not be applicable for your landfill. But it's really, it's really an outline for the city to follow and the operators of the landfill to follow. And for then DEQ to essentially hold the city, the permittee, responsible for the actions and the environmental protections needed for that landfill.
And I guess to Mr. Pollard's point, when that is available, it's a public document. So you'll put it on the website?
Yeah, we'll release it.
Okay, good. We'll make sure people know because I'm sure some people, they've been following this, that they've been experiencing this, would like to look at what it is and they may have thoughts. All right, any other comments or questions? Well, I'll just say I appreciate the work y'all have done to this point, the work city staff's done. You know, as you say, you know, it hopefully is making a difference, but there's still more work to be done. And that's a big part of it is kind of monitoring and keeping on top of it. And what, as situation may change, what needs to be done. And, you know, I appreciate you coming before us and informing us so that, you know, if there's anything that the council can do, that we can do that swiftly. Because, you know, it's not just a matter of complying with DEQ regulations. It's making sure that this is safe and a quality of life for our community. That we want people to, don't want to impinge on that. So I just thank you for that update and hopefully you'll have another one in a month or two or whenever. So.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move to item number two, discussion of urban archery season.
Counsel, due to the increase in deer within the city, Animal Patrol Officer Josh Schlegel will present an option for an urban archery deer season and will seek a consensus of council to send a letter to the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources requesting its consideration to allow an urban archery deer season in the city of Bristol, Virginia. Tonight, the only thing we're looking for is a consensus. This does not mean that we would adopt an urban archery deer season. We would still have to go through an ordinance process later on in 2021 or early 2022. And the deer season would not be open until the fall of '22 if we decided to go this route.
Good evening. All right, so I had spoken to Mr. Eads about this a little bit before, obviously a little bit before today. Had the obvious uptick in, at least in my experience with it, in motor vehicle accidents involving deer. The predator population has grown a little bit, at least significant enough to the point that I'm starting to get regular complaints about it. So I know that the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources offers a program called, obviously, Urban Archery Season. With that program, with a letter of intent from you guys, the DWR will allow participation in the, in the program. The program lasts, it starts, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the last weekend of September and goes through the, the first weekend of September goes through the last weekend in March. So it's quite an extensive, I believe, 29 weeks worth of time that you get to take advantage of an urban archery season. This is a kind of boring. The purpose of the urban archery deer season is to manage the overall population of the deer so that overpopulation doesn't cause starvation and doesn't cause the animals to seek, I guess, what you'd consider non-traditional food sources. Because of the population growth, especially in the city, the population of the deer's natural predators have also grown. Multiple complaints have been made to me regarding coyotes. Most of those complaints have happened just within the past year, year and a half or so. I know May of last year, had a report from a resident on Trail Road here in the city. They had left their small dog outside to use the restroom, dog never returned. Thought perhaps the dog had just ran away and the tenants advised me, or the residents rather, advised me that the animals found, their animals found the next morning on the backside of their property. Looked like it had been mauled by a much larger animal. It was obviously killed. Here we have some photos of coyotes. These are just here in the city. These particular pictures were taken from a trail camera from a citizen who lives on Timothy Lane. He sent them to me. I wasn't able to add the actual videos into the PowerPoint, but here are some screen captures of them. These are, these are different coyotes on, on different days. This is a little hard to see. If you look in the, at the back right side of the photo, you'll see to the top right side of the photo. I would assume that they were stalking deer on this gentleman's property. In winter of last year, also received a complaint from a citizen on West Valley Drive. That she had spotted a coyote running across Valley Drive with part of a fawn in its mouth. I guess obviously goes without saying, the reduction in the deer population would naturally lead to a reduction in the population of the predators. Do have some crash data. According to 2019 crash data, which is provided by the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles, 6,523 crashes in Virginia involved collisions with deer, with the majority of those accidents happening in the last three months of the year. That would predominantly been, be the time of the year when this urban archery season would take place. Virginia did see an 11% increase in deer involved crashes, deer involved crashes and a 16% increase in injuries compared to the year before. AAA insurance reported that claims of people who have struck deer averaged $3,956 per person. If you multiply that by 6,523, I'm not a mathematician, but that's a pretty high number of property damage that had been caused by deer just over the last couple of years. General information, the urban archery season lasts from September 5th through October 7th. It opens up again on January the 3rd through March 28th. In addition to urban archery season, you can also hunt deer during the regular hunting season if the city decides to go with this program. So essentially you're running continuously from early September through late March with a deer hunting program. Just some general information, some questions that I've had as far as regulations are concerned. You are required to purchase a license from the Department of Wildlife Resources just as you would be required to do so if you were hunting anywhere else in the Commonwealth of Virginia. All regulations that already apply for deer hunting with the Department of Wildlife Resources already still reply here, or apply here. I know a lot of cities, you can go to the DWR's website. You can pull up lists of each city's regulations that they have on the urban archery season. A lot of them are mostly redundant and include regulations that are already put in place by the DWR. Cities wishing to participate in urban archery season must submit a letter their intent to do so no later than April 1st, like Mr. Eads advised. If that is done by April 1st of this year, the first year that we would be eligible to participate in this program would be in the fall of 2022. A letter of intent, I'm being redundant now. Here are some cities that currently participate in the urban archery season. There are 38 independent cities in the Commonwealth of Virginia. 18 of those participate, including the city of Richmond, Stanton, Winchester, things of that nature. That's 47% of all independent cities. If we join that, that'll be 50% of all independent cities. So obviously this is not a new problem. This is a problem that has existed for a while. Take Richmond, for example, is a city with a population of over 200,000 people who have taken advantage of this program for a little while now. I don't have any data on how well it's working out for them, but they're still participating in it. Some towns, of course, that are currently participating. And that's pretty much it.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Schlegel?
I have a couple. Thank you for your presentation. I don't really have any problem with this at all. So to clarify, I know that you said that most accidents happen in the last three months of the year. That's when, that's when they, when the rut is.
According to the data, yes. And to answer your question, yes.
I've hit more than one deer in my life and that's usually when it happens.
Right.
The last time I hit a deer, I was on Euclid Avenue at about 11 o'clock at night where the nice houses are. And I hit one and it flipped up in the air. And you know that feeling, you have about 30 seconds and you go, oh, no. And you get that, as soon as I got that feeling, I hit a second one. And I killed it right there in front of the church.
Causing more damage to your deer.
It sure did. So, I mean, yeah, they're, they're in the city and, you know, they don't hurt anything you'd think because they're deer and everybody loves deer. But they do a lot of property damage unintended. And like you said, they do attract animals into the, into the places where they shouldn't be.
Correct.
So I have absolutely no problem with looking into this.
Thank you.
So my question is really centered around safety. You know, how do you envision from the standpoint of where you would allow, you know, archery within the city limits? Because some, some areas are obviously more suited for it than others, right?
Absolutely. I know a lot of, a lot of cities, if you get on DWR and read the regulations that other cities have already adopted, some of them will, will limit the land size to a half acre of land, which is clean enough, I think, to, to do what you intend to do on a half acre. Of course, on the safety issue of it, laws that already exist and regulations that, that account for hunting safety would still be applicable in this case. So, so to obtain a license, you would still need hunter's education. You would still, still wouldn't be able to fire over a road, at a school or at occupied dwelling or things like that. So a lot of those things are already covered by the DWR.
So you're, you're saying that these cities, and I hadn't really looked into it, that they do special zoning just for areas that are authorized for that type of hunting?
I wouldn't call it zoning, but I would say that they do have certain regulations. For example, like I said, you can't, you can't hunt on, or you have to have a minimum amount of property that you're able to hunt on. I know a couple of these cities have a half acre before they will allow you to hunt. Some cities do allow you to hunt on city, city property. Most cities allow you to hunt on city properties with the, with the, I guess you have to purchase a special permit from the city manager, from the police chief according to some of these other, other regulations that these cities have. So that could be something that you look into. And of course, you'd be able to designate those areas.
Well, as long as it can be done safely, I mean, that's the biggest issue inside the city limits, right? Because you do have, 95% of the hunters are safe.
Sure, sure. No, absolutely. Some of the most respectable people I know.
Then you got 5% of knuckleheads out there that are going to shoot the arrows across the road and you know, be on five acres, but they're pointing to the half acre that's toward all the houses, right? Where the kid playground is, right?
Correct.
So that's, that's where you're going to get in trouble. So, so you got, you got a lot to think about. I think you've got a lot of recommendations to do for the city staff about how to do it safely.
Sure.
I mean, it can't be near kids' playgrounds. It can't be, you know, near neighborhoods and that kind of stuff. There's going to be a lot of thought put into that. Because it could get out of control and the last thing he wants to, have somebody get hurt with that.
Well, most of these are in neighborhoods, but they, some of these regulations have, have been devised so that it makes it as safe as possible.
I used to never see deer. I mean, I couldn't tell you that from a girl enough. I never saw a deer down at Eastern Little League or on Old Avenue Highway. My goodness. It's like every morning, there's eight of them standing out by the American merchant over in the grass. They're everywhere. So it's crazy. It has gotten out of control.
I know just, just since the 1st of January this year, I think I've dispatched about nine deer that have been struck by cars. And that's just day shift hours, Monday through Friday. That's what I'm saying, everything that's happened after those hours.
So I support it if it's going to be done safely. Like, you know, it's got to be done really safely though.
Counsel, let us send you all a link to the urban archery information from the Department of Wildlife Resources. It basically gives an up, an outline of what each town and city that have adopted this, some of their regulations. So I think there's some good ideas that we can take from all of those to implement here in Bristol. Like you, Mr. Moonpower, the first deer I saw was five years old. I didn't see another deer till I was 16. And then now, every day.
I have one more question for you. Would this, would this apply just to deer or would it apply to other wild animals? I've seen, I've seen bears in the city.
Sure.
I don't know, I don't know if the.
Well, there's, there's certain restrictions on bear hunting anyways with the DWR. I know, I don't know if it's still like that. I know at one point you had, you could only be on a certain side of the interstate before you could hunt bear. But I can, I can find that answer out for you. I don't know. I know it's urban deer season. I would imagine it would just be deer, but I don't know if it would include other things as well.
I guess it wouldn't hurt to look into because I'm sure Richmond doesn't have a problem with, with bears wandering around. But when you get to the edges of the city, where you're almost out in the country, you know?
Right.
Or there.
Well, I am a hunter. And I can tell you that archery is one of the safest forms of hunting that there is. You have to take your time to aim and release that arrow. This is not like a gun that has multiple shots and that deer fever kick in that everybody talks about. And if you're a hunter, you know what I'm talking about. You know, you, you, you got to, you got to focus. And so safety, there, there's always a concern for safety. But it's not a concern for me being a hunter because it is the most safest form of hunting that there is.
Right.
And it's obvious that we have a problem with deer inside the city.
Right.
I've not been able to put a garden out for the past two years. But just, just can't have one because of the deer eating it up. And I don't want a big, old, ugly, bulky fence around the garden to try to have one. But what we, I'm in favor of this and that's what the city manager is needing a consensus on. So I want to get on the record saying I'm in favor of it. But we also have to change our city ordinance that says no projectiles released inside the city. Because I've been in situations where I've wanted to kill some groundhogs. And it's against the law to kill a groundhog in the city because of the projectile ordinance.
Right.
And then I was told we'll do it anyway. Well, that's not the way we need to function in the city. You know, your, your nuisance animals, you know, this is a, another way to get rid of nuisance animals, okay? And coyotes is a nuisance.
Sure.
I mean, they, they will kill your dogs, they will kill your cats. They run in packs, so, you know, who knows? But we do have a problem with the deer population and I'm support this 100%.
Thank you.
And I hope that in 2022, I get to bust me a deer in the city.
You got a spot already picked out?
I've had one picked out.
Yeah, just to kind of reiterate what Mr. Wingard said and Mr. Moonpower and Mr. Osborne, yeah, I don't have any concerns about this.
Thank you.
And I'll second all that, because, you know, in my time on council, more and more, get complaints, phone calls. We've, we've seen people come here during public comment and talk about deer. I've seen people get online and post pictures of deer in their yards and places I would not think there would be deer.
Sure.
So, you know, it, it, it is a growing problem. I think, as you point out, Councilman Wingard, archery is by far the safest way to, to do this. I do have some concerns about safety, but I don't think that's nothing that, looking at the regulations from Department of Wildlife Resources, plus maybe things you might have to add that you can bring back to us in such a way that we can do it safely. I think that's the bigger concern. But it, something does need to be done. There's no doubt about that. So go ahead and see what they come back with, I guess.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. All right, so we move to item number three, address change update.
Counsel Kelly Miller is going to be discussing the address changes that have been taking place across the city and just give you all a quick update as to where we are, what we've done, and some of the issues that we've run across and how we've addressed those.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. First off, I'd just like to point out that the summarization in July of 2018, we had our first planning commission meeting regarding this address update. We also had an intense PowerPoint presentation that took place in September of 18. We did a address update in January of 19. We did another update to council in July of 2020. Of course, Bristol Herald Courier in August of 2020 did a full-page Sunday article regarding this issue, as well as recently WCYB did a small snippet regarding the text to 911 and touched base on the address changes. As, as of December of 2020, all the addressing, all the road center lines of this city have been analyzed and have been brought into the addressing standards that were adopted in 2019. The item called an ANI Alley, which is the Any Number Identification and Any Location Identification, as well as the MSAG, which is the Master Street Addressing Guide, both of those items, which are consistent with the current, current 911 system, have been updated with all the new addresses are ready to be implemented. That's going to take place on April 30th. Currently, all of the, of the addresses in the city have been analyzed and sent back to the United States Post Office. They are doing each address approval based on the actual hall routes. So at the point in time, there's been 11 of the 28 hall routes for the 24201 and 24202 zip codes that have been processed and letters have been mailed. I've recently had a conversation with the Social Security Department, who is actually going to automate the update of the addresses in their system as the post office gets them entered into their system. So that was really positive news on that behalf. They did emphasize that people with Social Security checks who have direct deposit should see no interference whatsoever. Those who still receive a paper check would definitely need to check the Social Security Administration's website, or at least make a phone call to validate when you get your letter. BBU, Point Broadband, and Century Link, all three of those companies are 100% on board with an automatic adoption of every single address point. Southern Software, which is the company that controls the CAD or the, the computer aided dispatch software in our dispatch, they have been notified and they are ready to implement as soon as we say go with all of the new addresses, which will also have a layer which will retain the old addresses as a searchable function only. The Commissioner of Revenue's Office, the City Treasurer, we have worked diligently to find a third party who is going to implement every single address change for those two departments as far as taxation is concerned, billing records, everything to do with licensing in the city will all be updated automatically for everyone in the city. They won't have to worry about that as far as the Commissioner of Revenue's Offices are concerned. One of the big hurdles we've overcome is dealing with the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles. They have offered to come to the city of Bristol, Virginia, to do a temporary site here in the city council chambers on May 18th and 19th. And this is specifically intended for people who do not have internet access or do not have the ability for a family member to do their driver's license and vehicle tag registration online. So if you're not comfortable with that, there's a number listed in the change of address letter that you can call and set up an appointment either here or in the, the normal Abingdon, Virginia DMV office. The city's IT department, I have to say hands off to, or hats off to them, they've done a phenomenal job on the city's website, producing a how-to video to see why we're going through this process, as well as how to go to the city's GIS website to look at both the old and the new address. With that being said, just because your new address is posted on the city's GIS site, you do not need to implement that number until you physically receive your change of address letter. That letter is an informal receipt stating that the United States Post Office has, in fact, adopted, accepted, and implemented your new address into their system. Google Earth, Google Maps, fortunately, as, as late as this afternoon, I also received confirmation from MapQuest, along with TomTom, that they are open to receiving a full data dump from the city, listing all of the new addresses, all the new street names, street ranging. All of that will be implemented on any service that I can possibly get someone to respond to as far as implementation of the new addressing information. And as far as that goes, at the end of the day, we just need the citizens to understand, this is 100% a life safety issue. This makes addressing a linear-based method. There is a linear distance from the beginning of the road to the end of the road, and how far your structure is located down that road gives emergency services the ability to find you, whether you're in the house, in the backyard, or back in the woods deer hunting. So this gives you the best possibility of being found when you dial 911 that this city has ever seen. Any questions?
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
That's me over here behind the mask. So I know that not everyone has received their letter yet. Were they all mailed out all at once, or are they going out in waves, or what's happening?
The letters are actually being mailed as the United States Post Office processes the individual routes. They are letting me know when a route is complete, and at that point, the information is going to the printer for the letters to be mailed. And generally, the people receive them approximately three days after that.
So I've also seen, mostly on the west side of town, because that's, that's where I'm at the most, down off Randolph Street, some of the street signs have already changed that I've noticed, Monroe Street, Franklin Street. When will all of the street sign, are you waiting until all the addresses are changed, officially, to change the street signs, or?
Actually, our Public Works Street Department started on the very west end. And keep in mind, because block ranging is changing due to the elimination of single-digit addresses and double-digit addresses, the block ranging will be changing on every single intersection in the city. They're working from the west end to the east end, almost in a north-south function, to do the entire city from, from west to east until they're done.
So that's why I've seen most of the changes over there, because that's where they started, basically.
Correct.
As far as people who will have to change, it's about 2/3 of all residents, correct, or all addresses?
Closer to 3/4.
About 3/4. As far as people who have to change their license, does the DMV charge you for having to change your license? If, if you didn't move, it's just something that happened?
Unfortunately, there, you do have options in that situation. If you actually get a new license printed, I've been told there is a $20 fee to reprint a license. If you choose not to reprint your license to have the new address shown, they will provide you a card or a sticker to go along with your license, which may or may not be a challenge to keep track of both of them. If you are going to be, if your license is due to be renewed within the next year, I would just opt personally to do the sticker and wait until my license is due to be reviewed and do it all at one, one fatal swoop.
What's the implementation date to start again, the transition? Is there going to be a transition time, or is there a cutoff? What's the deal?
Yes, sir. Actually, 911 will be updated with the new addresses on April 30th. So the entire data system will be updated with the new address, the new ANI Alley, the new MSAG. So when you dial 911, every phone number in this city that is a landline phone number will be tied specifically to the new address. If a caller gives the old address, that is still a searchable function, but because of the way the software works, there can only be one, one phone number tied to one physical address in the system.
Is there a time period that folks that have their address changed have to get the physical mailbox and all that stuff changed, or how does that work?
The limit that we have set for them is on the April 30th date, just for the simple fact that if you call 911, that number on your house and the number on your mailbox needs to reflect the new address.
And if it doesn't?
If it doesn't, we still have the accessibility to search the old number and the old address.
How long after April 30th will the ability to search the old addresses go away? Is it a year?
Our intent is one year. That will coincide with the United States Post Office's ability to forward mail for one year. So hopefully, after one year, everyone will be accustomed to using that new number.
So if your bill gets messed up in the mail, you don't have to pay him, right?
Absolutely not.
I got special permission to change 526 Euclid to 666 Euclid. I just want you to know that.
Well, well considered.
We'll let her know you suggested that.
Okay, that's fine. I'll repeat it in public if necessary.
So have you, have you eliminated all of the instances? Because I remember the last time we talked about this, because I went back and I watched the meeting again. We were talking about Lee Court, Lee Lane, and all the instances of multiple streets with the same name. Have you been able to eliminate that?
We have eliminated everything that has been problematic for dispatch to date. We have actually found some additional streets. One that was brought to my attention a few months back was, of course, Longdale, L-O-N-G, as well as Longdale, A-L-A-W-N-D-A-L-E. That creates an enunciation issue that unfortunately, we had similar address ranges on both streets, and both streets are very far apart. So one misspoken word can create a serious delay in time for response. That created an issue. We have a Terrence Drive and a Terrence, one which created some issues. That's, that has been resolved. We have some, some other roads that create problematic situations due to the fact that the roads simply change names in the middle of a curve or a straightaway with no indication that you've changed street names.
I will commend your release on some of the, I guess, I don't know if it's, if you did it on purpose, but like up next at Thomas Jefferson Apartments now, Adams Alley is next to Jefferson. I don't know if you did all that stuff on purpose, but it's kind of a cute thing to get the names similar to what's around them, so. That's unrelated to anything, I just liked it.
Yeah, yeah. It's a name change, or the, the road names actually became quite a challenge. We, in some instances, reverted back to very old road names that had been eliminated historically in the city. We brought back Front Street. I think we even looked at bringing back Water Street. We tried to retain a historical issue, and we tried to stay away from naming any street, obviously, after current businesses, AKA Cabela Drive, Alpha Place, Tinseltown, things of that nature, where businesses come and go, the addresses should always stay there, and it should not be named after individuals that may or may not turn out to have a history that's not real desirable, so.
I just have one question, or one comment. So after this is all finished, and I'm not sure of the terminology, but would we be able to say we're totally compliant? The city's compliant with the next-gen 911 standards? That's the ultimate?
Absolutely, absolutely. And one of the things that has made itself very clear is the fact that just because a community is next-gen compliant, a community can still have some really horrible addressing and be next-gen compliant. Next-gen compliant, if you take that into consideration, that means the software side of your city's address means every address lines up perfectly with every road center line as far as the beginning and ending range, the odds and evens, the parity is correct, and the locations are all sequential. At that point, you're next-gen compliant. We could literally name every street in this city, Bristol Drive, every single one of them, and give every single one of them a different number and be next-gen compliant. Is that safe? Absolutely not. Is it compliant? Sure. Checklist, I'm done. So we have been very methodical through constant communication with all city departments, our emergency services. Lieutenant Robinette and I have worked diligently on identifying where we've historically had issues, where we've had problems, and what we need to do to make this as safe as we can, because the vast majority of errors that come into 911 don't come on the dispatch or the responder's side, they come from the caller's side.
One of the groups, and I appreciate you reaching out to, to all these different groups, the post office, Social Security, maybe, maybe I wouldn't pay attention or overlooked it, is, of course, working with voter registrar. They'll change all that on their end.
Yes, yes, sir. Matter of fact, I've been working very closely with, with the voter registrar's office over the last few weeks. And unfortunately, the state's voter software, not to go down that road, but it is a little bit antiquated, so they are having to actually do these voter address updates manually, one at a time. They do not have the ability to implement, after me begging and pleading with the state elections board, that there has to be a way this data can be overwritten. There has to be. Apparently, I've been told there's not.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, they have to check, they have to double-check their work through the DMV website, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
There, there's a multitude of places that the, that our particular voter registrar, she validates addresses through both parcel identification, through the DMV, as well as through the post office. She has a multitude of sources to validate that a voter is, in fact, a city resident that does live at a, at a known residence address and so forth throughout the city. So it's, I'm, I'm very confident in the data that she deals with daily.
So just to be, just to be clear, some of the ones you mentioned, Commissioner Revenue, voter registrar, BBU, and Point Broadband, those are ones that people do not have to call, they're being changed automatically, updated automatically?
Yes, those have been taken care of automatically. That, you still may tend to receive bills at the old address for the next couple of months, because this is a massive amount of addresses that they have to implement. And of course, they have QAQC and checks and balances in their systems to make sure they get it right before they start using the new address.
I'm gonna make a comment. I can see a problem. There are so many numbers, so many houses that have, have their numbers changed. Has anybody even thought about reaching out to Lowe's, Home Depot, and these other supply companies and let them know that there's going to be a surge on house numbers? Because people's gonna go, go and try to find a number to change their house, and it's gonna be the toilet paper issue all over again.
Actually, that was brought to my attention by a resident calling in to validate their information, and we are in the process of trying to communicate that with as many stores as we can that this poss, that this is actually coming. So yes, it's, you, you are not the only one that's brought that to our attention.
So is Google Maps gonna work on 430?
Absolutely. Matter of fact, I've been very impressed that Google has reached out to me on multiple occasions, begging me for the data. And the QAQC process, I've been very, very fortunate that the post office has been, because they're doing this one address at a time, they, out of 7,600 addresses, they found 14 instances where I had reused an old ad- they found fourteen instances where I had reused an old address on a new location. So that got changed before it got implemented as a letter.
And you're gonna start the next round of new addresses all over again next year? Is that right?
Specifically your address, yes, sir.
Now Kelly thinks you've done a good job and I know you've had a stressful few days dealing with this. I will say that Kelly's probably had no less than a hundred phone calls in regards to the address changes, but after he's talked to these individuals, most people understand why the address had to be changed and are appreciative after the fact. So he's done a real good job handling the situation.
It's a little out of order, but since this is something that a lot of people have questions about, would you mind, Mr. Pollard, ask the question of you?
Certainly.
Let him come up there just.
I have two questions. Again, my name is Michael Pollard, I live at one oh one Ashley Drive. One, it sounded like you were implying, I want clarification on that, that the new addresses do not currently exist as old addresses?
That's true.
Okay, that'll make things a lot more straightforward and I imagine you did that intentionally. And the other is when I went to one of my, I can't remember if it was a credit card holder to change my address, they gave me a different carrier route number. Are the carrier route numbers also changing?
No, the carrier route numbers are specific to the United States Post Office. And I'm not, I guess I don't understand necessarily where you're speaking, saying it.
For the zip plus four, my last four digits of the zip plus four changed.
That is controlled solely by the United States Post Office and unfortunately, a lot of places have the incorrect zip.
Okay.
Just as a learning method, everyone needs to understand, everything north, the interstate eighty-one, southbound one, everything, whether it's city or county, is two four three zero two. Everything south of that particular line of the interstate eighty-one is two four three zero two.
So if the vendor says that my pre-sort number changed, they're probably incorrect on that.
The pre-sort number is four, seven, eight, nine.
Right.
That's a strong possibility it did change, but once again, I don't.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you again, Ms. Miller. We appreciate the update, answering the questions and all the work that you've done to try to get this rolled out as, hopefully as seamlessly as possible. I'm sure there's always some hiccups when you have this many addresses and stuff, but I think if there's one thing people can take away from this is, you know, the need to, one, not only be compliant, but the reason behind it, which you stated, is clearly about making sure that in an emergency, city personnel, emergency personnel can get to a person in a timely manner. So I think the comments I've had from people, once they understand why, I think they're a little more understanding.
Yes, sir. It's been my pleasure.
All right, thank you. All right, item number four, approval of the Bristol Health Department to retain a portion of revenue refund.
Counsel, I brought this on the agenda for a vote simply because during the budget process, council approves a budget line item for the Bristol, Virginia Health Department. We've been notified that Bristol is due a revenue refund in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, seventeen dollars and forty-six cents from the Mount Rogers Health District. Due to the COVID nineteen implications, the year was very unpredictable from a budget perspective and this is the reason for the net refund due to the city. Due to the work of Mount Rogers Health District over the past fiscal year, they request fifteen thousand of dollars of the refund be retained to cover essential needs for continued operations of the Bristol City Health Department. This would mean the net amount of refund due back to the city of Bristol would be one hundred and twenty-two thousand, seventeen dollars and forty-six cents.
You need a motion for that?
Yes.
All right.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, I'm just gonna go on the record saying, you know, never before have I ever seen the checkbooks opened up the way that they have in government right now. I mean, it's just money flowing left and right, trillions of dollars being borrowed and spent. And this is a refund coming back, I'm assuming it's an overpayment. Am I correct on that? Why would we be getting this refund? Is it an overpayment?
Funds unexpended.
It's unexpended.
Unexpended by the Bristol Health Department. They request their monies quarterly that's allocated to council and as they've closed out fiscal year twenty, these were monies unexpended.
Okay, all right. Well, it's my thoughts that we should get this full entire refund back without them retaining the fifteen thousand. We're fixing, we're in the budget cycle right now. We're gonna be writing them a check again because we have to fund them, but at some point in time, this fifteen thousand has got to be reflected whether it's right now tonight or in this budget cycle. I mean, the money is due back to this city, this city could use this money and I'm opposed to letting them retain the fifteen thousand dollars and that's just my position on it.
Hearing none. Clerk, Colerole.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Item number five, presentation of health insurance rates for fiscal year twenty-two.
Counsel, as I've mentioned, past couple of meetings and in two-on-twos, the health insurance rates did increase this past year by three percent and as we've gone through this process, these will be the new insurance rates pending council approval for employees. This is the Key Advantage five hundred plan. You can see the fiscal year twenty-two premium for single is six hundred and thirteen dollars, single plus one is eleven hundred and thirty-four dollars and family is sixteen hundred and fifty-five dollars. The city would cover four hundred and eighty-three dollars for a single, six hundred and sixty-five dollars for a single plus one and a thousand and sixty-nine dollars for family. That's an eighteen dollar increase across the board under the comprehensive plan. The employee, single, would not see an increase, single plus one would see a fourteen dollar increase in their premium and a family would see a thirty dollar increase. The preventative Key Advantage five hundred plan, you will see an eighteen dollar increase for the city portion on the single, a twenty dollar increase on the single plus one and a family, on the family plan, an eighteen dollar increase. Once again, the single employee would not have an increase in their premium, single plus one would be fourteen dollars and family would be thirty dollars. Under the Key Advantage one thousand plan, the premium would be five hundred and eighty-four dollars for single, a thousand and eighty for single plus one, family fifteen seventy-seven and on the preventative portion, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars for single, one thousand and forty-nine for single plus one and fifteen hundred and thirty-one dollars for family. The increase across the board is eighteen dollars to the city on all plans and for the employee, you would see a decrease for single on both the preventative and comprehensive plan that is simply due to a coding issue because each of those plans cannot have the same premium cost to the employee, it has to be coded differently. Single plus one would be fourteen dollar increase to the employee under the comprehensive, under the preventative, a thirteen dollar increase to the employee and under the family, a twenty-eight dollar increase under the preventative and a thirty dollar increase for comprehensive dental. So the budget is a general fund impact of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars, the solid waste disposal fund sees an impact of six thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, transit fund of thirteen hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a total impact to the city's budget of sixty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars by that increase. So I will sit down and let you all discuss how you'd like to proceed.
Do you need a motion to approve this?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion before we get to the discussion?
I move for approval of the health insurance rates for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I was just gonna throw out there, is it right that over the past two years before this year, there were no increases?
That's, one year we actually had a decrease and then one year there was no increase.
It seems like rates, whether it's your insurance or, you know, what you pay in this or that generally go up, so I feel like we sort of anticipated this where we haven't had an increase in a few years. It's not surprising, is what I'm trying to say.
Any more comments and discussion? All right, hearing none. Clerk, Colerole.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Let's see, now we move to the consent agenda and what is the pleasure of counsel?
And a move for approval is presented.
All right.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Clerk, Colerole.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. No further business, we stand adjourned.